...complete plan and identify the scope of work as well as specifications for any projects ongoing or new. We really need to focus on getting the budget amendments done. We have upcoming capital improvement plans, amendments that need to be done, and the new 2017 capital improvement. And we have personnel evaluation coming up this month that the council wants to look at. The 2007 budget process and/or 2017 budget process and the 2017 capital improvement plan, that's all that'll be done in the next couple of months, too. So, we've got to work on the schedule for getting those done and getting our hearings done.
So, when you proposed, oh, I'm sorry. You just had a question now, or a comment on number seven, six of your report. The ditching on Kennesaw Avenue. I would say that it's not completed.
Okay.
And I would say the same thing regarding the stump grinding throughout the city. It's not completed. I mean, they brought some work down there, but I think, this was a question to me, and I've shared some with you, some with Jackie, some with David, that it's probably not completed.
Yeah.
That's, I guess.
There were still many dugs up on Pickens Street up there.
They did those, yeah. Problem was that, in some cases, it was done very well. In some cases, there was a huge hole dug, but then they left all the trimmings of the wood, the tree.
Lay it on.
Yeah, and didn't sweep out the hole. And then further down in Pickens, there's a huge, there's huge tire trap. I mean, it probably goes down to six inches or so. I mean, I don't think I stuck or something. It could've been soft material, but I mean, that's supposed to be, at least as I see it, it should've been leveled off and manicured a little bit when they were done. So, I mean, in the, in the something, it's just a matter of tidying up. But in terms of the Kennesaw, I think there's a fair amount of work yet to be done to make sure that the pipe, the drainage pipes are.
Cleared out.
Cleared out, right. They did a good job on Parsonville, and other parts, not so good. So, that was just my comment and.
Did you make a note of that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's no problem.
I also have the police department report. Both officers attended the radar certification training on February the 22nd and the 23rd. The training courses were held at Dawson County Sheriff's Office free of charge. They obtained their training hours outside the class needed to complete the certification. They grew one citation since the last meeting. The citation was generated by the tag reader, and that's all I have.
Okay. All righty. Next, we have the consent agenda. And that's, Miranda's got that also.
Okay. All of the items on the consent agenda were items that we had reviewed during our last work session. We just need to ratify that, the approval of all of these topics.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In other cities, the consent agenda are basically for issues that are, I guess, not controversial and that we, council's already addressed previously. And what it allows you to do is to, I don't know how many we got, one, two, three, four, a whole bunch of them, we can just do one vote and dismiss that whole part of the agenda.
Okay. Well, that's, that's what she's saying, this entire section has been, has been done.
Right.
So, we'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, item six.
And if traditionally, if there's one item that any council member disagrees that they want to vote for, then they'd say, let's take that one off the consent agenda.
Right.
We put it on the regular agenda and they don't rest it off.
The idea is kind of, you know, we had a very long work session.
Right.
We're trying to move this forward to the extent we find concurrence.
Okay.
So, I make a motion and we adopt.
Out of number six.
Out of number six consent agenda.
A through G.
So, we have a motion and we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second. All the players, let me know when the raise is ready. Get unanimous. Okay. Okay, we have all business to approve or deny whether, I won't let you handle it all. You've got to hold the, the figures on it, Miranda.
And the repair of the sanitation truck. We have had the truck looked at and tried to have it diagnosed, the diagnostic done on it. The guy can't seem to figure it out, so we're going to have to send it to the dealer unless somebody else has any suggestions on what we need to do.
Well, it's all computerized control, and, you know, I don't think we have any, any choice. Where's the dealer?
Atlanta.
Atlanta, it's probably down south.
It is.
That's, so, do we need to drive it? It would be drivable, I think, wouldn't it?
It would be, but I would need to ask you that question, since we don't really take a chance on having to tow it, but I don't know.
Well, we need to send somebody along with him, and if it needs to, you know, if it stops along the way, we have no choice but to tow it.
Right.
So, probably what we would do is ask for approval to either approve or, matter of fact, her, her motion here is to approve or deny the repair of the sanitation, sanitation truck. And that would include the towing if it requires it as we get closer.
Right, which means that we need to figure out where we're going to go, move forward, if we're going to send it down there, if there's somewhere local that someone can take it to.
I don't know anybody, you know anybody, David?
No.
I mean, it's an electronic controlled truck, it's probably.
So, do we have any feel for what's going to cost us? Do we have another?
We don't know. That's what we were trying to get from the repair shop. Well, let's go, but.
Which we could, and when we take it down there, we can request that say notifies prior to beginning the repair, but, you know, we have no other garbage truck that we can run, so.
Right, and that's.
And matter of fact, is, did they have to use the flatbed this past week?
No, we were able to get it back in time before.
And it operated okay as far as this week?
Yes.
What does it, what, never mind.
Good question.
Okay. What's broken?
The automatic shift, it has buttons that you can push. Two or three years ago, our particular officer, he had broken through the dash, through the plastic parts of the dash, and looks back against the structure of the, of the cab. We had the repair shopper molest him. He had to change the dryer and a couple of other items, but he managed to get it back before we used it. Of course, it has occasionally failed to function properly during the entire time that we've been having, so it doesn't shift.
Right.
Is this the transmission? It's the control system, is my understanding. It's got an Allison automatic, it's got a push button control pad, that is where all of the problem is. It's all electronic. And, you know, which in my opinion, what we need to do is take it down immediately after, and let them know, given VIN serial number, that it's coming down, and be sure they can get to it within the next, early in the next week, or we need to try to run it another week, one. We need to have, have an appointment set up for them to work on that specific truck, give them the VIN number, and they'll have it till they can call it from their computer. And we need to take it down after the garbage collection is completed, this week if we can, but, and be sure they can start on Monday. Yes, Mike?
As much as I'm not thrilled with the prospect of the cost of a tow truck, at the same time, I'm more concerned with the well-being of our sanitation workers and anyone that would have to drive down there with them, because if they're in Atlanta in this traffic, or, you know, whatever, have to drive it down there, and it doesn't cooperate, if they could be injured, somebody else could get injured, isn't that a bit dangerous? I mean, I don't, I don't know how bad it is, you know what I mean? I don't know if it would cause, but my concern is for everybody's well-being.
Well, that'd be my concern, too, but, I mean, you know, that's, you can, if he stays in the right lane and drive, you know, I'm talking about to right, far right lane, not get over in the left lane, which it shouldn't ever be in the left lane anyway. But he could, he could drive it down there, and if, if I need to go down there and bring him back, you know, I'd be glad to, to go down and bring him back, if there's nobody else to go down and bring him back, you know, whatever it takes to get it down there.
Yes, Mike? Do we have a backup plan, like if we couldn't get it back within?
We could use our flatbed truck that is operational, and that would be, there'd have to be several groups run to the, to dump. That's why I say we need to arrange the repair, give them the VIN number, and they can, you know, they can set up an appointment. And, of course, if y'all want to have it towed down there, we can certainly get a price on towing it down there, but, in my opinion, it would be drivable. Once you get it in gear, it's probably going to stay engaged and could drive it down there. But if need be, I'll follow him down there and provide as much traffic as I could to give out the road if anything went wrong.
So, we have a motion to approve, to move forward with the diagnosis, diagnostics?
Yes, and then we're probably, Miranda's going to have to call the members up and approve, if you want, if you want to get approval for the repair. Call, find that box car around, have them call her back, and then you contact the council members to, for verbal approval to get it done down there, and we'll get it done down there.
Well, is there a threshold that we want to agree to right now, that you wouldn't have to call us back? What's, what's too much money? Or can we, there isn't too much money, who we want to have to garbage, I mean, who'd have to do it?
Well, they charge probably $125 an hour labor, plus their minimum diagnostic.
That's our only truck, and it comes once a week. Of course, I mean, I don't know what the option there is.
Well, I would have it fixed.
Well, our remaining budget for that is $2,993.
There's a, there's a good threshold for you. Except, we're going to be out of business, and we go to 4,000, aren't we? Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we, the manager's movement to go forward on the diagnostic and to keep the council informed in terms of cost estimates and the scheduling to the extent that we can keep service to the customers necessarily.
Motion, second, to approve repair on the sanitation truck, and Miranda will be contacted as far as a matter, and like I say, help them go ahead and get an appointment before they know it's coming. Oh, no. We'd like to get it down there, of course, I know sometimes they run late on Friday. We could probably take it down Saturday. And let's go ahead and, you know, they work 24 hours a day down there at Six Truck Shops, so, but they need to be expecting it before they can put it, pull it on in there. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to that effect. All the players, let me know when the raise is ready. Get unanimous. Okay. Next, we have approve or deny to suspend service on the street light at the police depart, police station. And there's two street lights out over there, or that our old areas was put in, so we kind of moved the city, the police station over there, so if we want to.
The cost of that lot's $70 a month approximately, but the police department moved back to City Hall. They've started parking the Tahoe back up here, so there's a couple other vehicles over there that, I mean, I think maybe we could relocate them and cut that light off, or either go back to our normal street light instead of the big ones.
How much is the normal street light? $18 a month?
Yes.
I think it's $19.
It's between 10 and 20, at all times.
Depends on what's what it's, which we would need a fair light, bright light over there, because we do have equipment over there from time to time.
I hope they take it, particularly the truck would be smashed in front of her. And we should encourage, we should encourage no observation and no lights, and hope that removes itself from our inventory. I'll make a motion to approve, what do you want, to discontinue the service to the security light, the average is $70 monthly, which is, that's really wild, that's a lot of lighting there. I make, I make a motion to approve the discontinuation of that service.
I guess, why not put it up another street light, nine, 10, $20 a month?
I go for that.
And there needs to be a light there and that.
Yeah, so I'll amend my motion to discontinue the very expensive $70 monthly charge and to see if we could find an alternative. What would it be, is it a price range or, we want some lighting there, but just normal light?
A normal street light.
Yeah, so that should be sufficient to.
And we need to go with, the light lights in front of the, you know, we have one Georgia Power light that we want to pay for over our extra railroad, and the entrance of the Marlboro company, and that is a little more expensive, a little brighter light than at most points. Which that's the only Georgia Power light we've got in the city of Nelson, so.
Okay.
Just change it to that kind of light, except what your motion is, that's, that's the amendment.
It's a regular street light.
It's a regular street light.
There's more of the street light, $16, $18.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Because that, that truck and everything needs to stay up there.
Yeah, so I'm in my motion to reflect the street light, whatever the street light costs.
And we have a motion to replace it with a regular street light.
Yes, sir.
I will have a motion, a second. All the players, let me know when the raise is ready. Okay. Okay, next, we have to approve or deny the contract presented by Heritage Home Inspections as building inspector, and that is seven seats.
Miranda, you will go over that?
Yes, and we recently called upon Heritage Home Inspections to do our last-minute inspection. During this time, I asked him for pricing on how much he would charge if he was to do a contract with us to do all of our residential and commercial. He's $65 per visit for all of our residential. I also talked to Mr. Hansard, who sent me over his pricing for doing it, and he is actually only able to do commercial. He sent over his pricing, which you will find behind the contract for Heritage Home And we have potential building permits coming in that we need to go ahead and decide who we're going to use moving forward, whether it be residential, commercial, or what have you, just so whenever it comes about, I know which way to go.
Is that Miranda, $65, you mean, Michael?
No, $65 is for the residential. Commercial will be.
If, and, Pickens County say we could use their inspector, commercial? Rob Jones has indicated that, that we could use theirs, but there was some discussion, you know, that like this community building is in Cherokee County. I, I think if we could use theirs, you know, we're the city of Nelson, the, really, the county line shouldn't affect us one way or the other as far as conducting the city business. But we, we've got this one coming up, up in, up in the subdivision on the main, on Pickens Street up there, could, could come in tomorrow, you know, they've been in two or three times already, you know, we just need to be able to go forward on that one. Which we, yes?
Can I make a motion? Sorry, we can have discussion.
Sure, my question.
I make a motion that we approve the Heritage Home Building Inspector proposal. And I'll give some explanation for that in thirty seconds.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion, second, to approve the, the building inspector, open for discussion.
Yes, Mike? So, the issue we really are facing, or A, one of many issues we're facing right now, is we had an inspector who represented the city as our housing inspector, building inspector, excuse me, and he didn't have all the credentials that he needed, and so he's, I guess, resigned or moved on, whatever, moved on. So, we're having, and then in that interim period, which is what, been a month, two months, we've had a plumbing issue, which this guy came in and did. There's the property down by the industrial property across from Laurel Lake entrance, which needs a permit. There's the two of them, hopefully, Winchester Oaks, which are residential, issues, a foundation that wants to get built that you talked about, and then the Burn House. The issue is that we're right now without any kind of a building inspector, and if you mean our zoning ordinance, we, that's one of the things that we spell out in there. And it was my understanding that he drafted his, Mr. Haskin?
Hazlitt.
Haskin, Hazlitt?
Hazlitt.
Drafted his proposal around being the, meeting requirements of being the Nelson's inspector for residential as well as commercial, and, and you see the explanation of his, he's qualified for architectural plan review, solar erosion, TFO inspection, whatever that is, footing foundations, slab, plumbing, exterior wall racing, the integrals on, there's another page with the stuff. The other alternative, Mr. Hansard, is really a fire inspector.
And a commercial building.
But not a residential inspector, so he doesn't have all of the other credentials. And I think, at least what I see is, the gap we need to fill is to get a inspector that represents the city of Nelson's inspection program, and who do all the record, all the records, do certificate of occupancies, the whole process of a building inspection. And right now, we don't, we have an empty position, if it's a word. And my thought is, he's qualified, I think, a much better set of qualifications than at least the alternative we have presented here. But I don't really care who we hire, but this guy looks in comparison to the two pretty well diversified in terms of his credentials and certificates to be able to do stuff. Yes?
I like the fact that he can take care of all our business for us. We don't have to have one person do this and one person do that. And in reference to the person from Pickens, I don't per se have a problem with that either way, if that would work out, but a couple of months ago, when we were looking into using the Cherokee County inspector, there was a problem because people didn't like Cherokee County. That's kind of just doing the opposite of that.
Well, the only problem was Cherokee County, well, it $900 and $90 something dollar, $940 or dollars per month every month where we had any inspections or not.
I mean, I just like the idea of this guy because he's neutral either way, and he can cover all our needs, and he seems to be very thorough. And when I searched on the sites, which of course are not, they're made for people like you and I that are looking for people to inspect their homes and their businesses and whatnot, on every site I checked, and he had no complaints, and all his ratings were like, ratings that he could get from people that he has worked with. I mean, that means something to me.
Any further discussions right here? I don't understand why if Commissioner Jones offered for us to be able to use the county's inspector, why not, why haven't we looked into that?
I wasn't aware of that.
I mean, it sounds logical, do you?
I wasn't aware. I could talk, I can call him and talk to him.
Can I do it in Cherokee County, though?
That's.
That could do it in the city of Nelson.
You weren't.
The city of Nelson, that had anything to do with either county's board.
Would you, if you would like, I will talk to Rob Jones tomorrow and see what he is, what he says. Of course, now, we got to make a, why don't, why don't we go ahead and make a approval to use this one, if we need to? I mean, if we've got this, we do have this residential that is upcoming. If Pickens County says no, we use this. We'll be that picture.
No, I'm sorry, I'm going to cut you off. I would say we could do something like, let's say, give it 30 or 60 days to look into other alternatives, and then.
I don't know whether we got 60 days or not, if it's something that comes in.
No, no, I'm saying, amend or, you know, amend it or whatever to where we could do, approve this gentleman for the next 30 or 60 days.
Okay.
Not, you know, for a year or whatever, don't go for, yeah, and then we can look into even, see if we can get even more and then go from there, but at least in the meantime, we have somebody who want to come out.
We have somebody we can use.
So, we don't have to worry about things not moving forward with everybody wanting to build with the warm weather coming. I hate the whole without projects.
I do, too. But that'd be your approval, or?
I don't, I mean, to me, he's already been tested through, you're the plumbing guy, it may not, the situation, the stock, I don't think there's much room to think we need to try about for another 30 days, what were you saying, 30 days?
Well, no, because they wanted to look in to see what Pickens County inspector said.
Oh.
Which, if we were to vote on that, it could be, I'm, I'm just saying, we would need some time to look into it, Miranda, look into it.
Well, then, they should look at Cherokee as well, then.
Well, but the problem with, you know, Cherokee wants almost $1,000 a month, every month, whether we have any inspections or not.
Then that wouldn't be a good choice. I'm just saying, don't just look at one, and maybe that's not what he would do. I mean, I haven't talked to him to know what he would do. So, talk to Jerry Cooper, talk to Pickens, do both, but I, I think we need to fill a hole. I mean, I'm, it's okay. If you want to talk to him, that'd be fine with me. I'll amend the motion to allow the mayor to talk to people.
By the mayor, the mayor, you take the mayor out?
We'll have the city manager talk to both of them.
I'm glad we got a choice.
Well, now, he said, Larry, I think the reason Mike said that is because you offered, you.
Well, I will contact the commissioner because, you know, I personally know the commissioner, and.
Let's have Miranda do it, that's, you're correct, that'd be the appropriate thing to do. And I'll add that to my motion, how's that? We got it confused enough.
We're going to have to re-plant that.
We've added three months for time for the city manager to.
Your, your, your motion is to approve this building inspector for a period of 90 days.
Six.
And sixty-nine, which?
I thought you said, what did you say?
I said 30 to 60. 60 might be better, it's in between 30 and 90.
60. The city manager will contact Pickens County to check on.
Yeah.
Pickens County Building Inspector.
And I would say, at that point, if there were any alternatives, we should enter into a longer-term contract with this guy, not 30 days. This is just an interim thing, I guess.
Who seconded your motion?
Me, I resecond.
Okay. Do you have the, in a minute, real clear what that motion is now?
We should Miranda do that.
I'm sure she does do it, I hope, because I don't know what it is.
Okay, well, motion, second, all the favor, let me know when the raise is ready. Okay, we have approve or deny to move forward with furnace repairs at police station. Now, Councilman Jerry has got a, a price on fixing the furnace, air conditioning at the police station, so, please fill out that document.
Yeah, it was, I'll look at your own motion. I'll keep you here, I'm going to feel bad, you.
It was $2.60.
Was it? No. Well, what ended up?
But the furnace is broken.
What happened?
The one over there.
Yeah, what happened, the furnace was broken, was trying to get prices on it, and this. And this, this man come in and he found out that some of the walls had been pulled out, some of them had been crossed up or something or another. So, in order for him to find out, he had to remove, had replaced the walls, you know, had it straighten while out. And so, ended up, and I told him, I said, I'd have to give approval to council before we could agree to pay anything. But he said, well, I gotta do this to find out what's wrong with it, because nobody else was thinking the unit was blown up, which would cost us chunk of money. And so, he, he done that, he hooked a unit that was hanging up to it, that much, and the furnace he towed with it. So, bottom line is for two hundred and something dollars, since he done found what's wrong with it, we go ahead and fix it, because at some point, we're probably gonna want to fix that building. And since we know what's wrong with the unit now, we might as well fix it and have it over there. Otherwise, it might as well.
Well, in my opinion, we need to look and try and rent, build out to somebody for not going to use it. I mean, that's, it deteriorates worse than that. But look at how much deterioration we've already had.
Well, I think, I think we need to try to go ahead and replace fix that unit, they snow.
Yes, sir.
If you're gonna do anything to that building, it's also an issue about taking off the backside or something that's, he doesn't turn that. Right. Okay. I mean, two hundred and sixty dollars is to find out what's wrong with the unit.
No, but.
If the building's not, I got it, if the building's not really gonna be used, what's the purpose of fixing something, spending money on it? Well, I don't disagree with you there, you know, we need to look at, having somebody occupy the building at some point, you know, for a fee, I mean, you know, we can, I don't think that would ever happen. Either building, it was never gonna happen, not in Nelson. Yeah, it's not going to.
Well, we, yes. So, we could leave the furnace there ready to be repaired if it turned out there was some likely, of course, that also means we'd have to do all the code compliance. I mean, there's a big investment once we try to make that building, provide a vanity to, to anybody. I have a, I have a question, and I don't know anything about this, so I look to you guys, you all are part of me, but is it possible to use that furnace over in Joey's shop? Because I know Joey's shop has a really high cost for the heating. I don't know if you could help me on that.
It would, it would be extremely expensive, it's an uninsulated.
Not a good idea, okay.
It'd be too long.
Okay, never mind.
There was a diagnostic charge on that seventy, seventy-something dollars. However, I didn't pay it, I mean, I thought I might have to give it to a K-1 council, but.
I'd say we ought to.
I said, I figured since he figured it out, you know how to fix it, it wouldn't cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars, so not if they rest in us to go with what I said to you on.
Well, if you want to take that section of building off, I'm sure it's good for even there, right?
That section, no.
No.
No, it's not. Just the section where the furnace is sitting.
Yes, Mike?
Could we, would you be interested in a motion, what is it, seventy dollars that he hoped for his, tied his for his?
Seventy something dollars for the diagnostic.
Seventy.
However.
You offer us?
You, you're gonna, you may have to pay somebody else, you may have to pay somebody else for diagnostic if you're gonna go ahead and fix it now. But he figured out what's wrong with it, all the walls, rocks, and pulled out, why it looks like it, I don't know.
Where we have.
Part of it was changing the breaker, because the breaker was too small.
Maybe you should, I'm talking about, you're about to have them submit a bill if you think it warrants it.
Well, he did, I think that's what that was when they asked him to, that was the bill. You got a copy of it?
We never really gave authority, I guess, to do that.
No, I, I did. I was just trying to see if you could find out what was wrong with it.
Yeah. Okay, so, I guess I'll make a motion, if I may, to not move forward repairing the furnace at the police station at the quoted cost of two hundred and seventy dollars.
Now, motion, do we have a second?
I'll start it through motion.
Okay, we have motion second to not move forward on repair of the, the heat there at the police park. All in favor, let me know, we'll raise your right hand. Two names. Okay. New business, we have, Miranda's gonna handle this.
Okay. Before I get started on the budget amendments, or, I would like for everyone to look at this chart right here. This shows all of our revenues and expenditures and the difference. This is your fund balance, this is your expenditures, this is your revenues. Since 2013, revenues have increased forty-seven thousand. Since 2013, expenses have increased a hundred and twenty-five thousand approximately. That's a difference of seventy-eight thousand. I would like the council to take this time to look over these charts, all of our expenses, and I suggest that the council evaluate Nelson and what it takes to operate within its means and needs. I think it's time to reevaluate what Nelson needs. We have some big issues with our budget for 2016 moving forward. Just to finish out this year, there is a deficit of fifty-five thousand dollars to finish out the rest of this year. And that's with us not doing any kind of cutbacks or anything. So, and if you go back to number eight, I had listed the budget amendments that need to be made. However, I am requesting that the council call a special meeting later this month so we can review those and decide what needs to be done moving forward.
Do you have a suggested date?
I say before the work session, which is the, I'm not sure where it is.
Is it on St. Patrick's Day?
I don't know. I'm gonna do that right now. But I say before the work session of the.
Well, it'd have to be next week, I wonder.
I think we should follow in the week, wouldn't it?
Okay, the work session is the twenty, or third Thursday, is the seventeenth.
Yeah, it's St. Patrick's.
Be next Thursday.
What are you guys suggest? A good date?
Next Thursday.
Again, we have the, we only have a few months to get together our 2017 budget, so we need to get this one straightened out before we can move forward with our 2017.
Well, our work session is, should be the seventeenth. I would combine the two dates because, you know, that's the tenth, which is this Thursday, is only date that's, that's wrapped open. By this being the seventh, it may be coming later in the month. So, you want to set a work session at seventeenth and make it a call session also, call.
If you, if y'all are okay with doing it the seventeenth, that's fine with me.
So, we wouldn't resolve a budget amendment until following, until April, council meeting would be the idea?
Well, if we, we could make it a work session and the regular call meeting, we'd have time to notify the papers that we were having a call meeting.
You don't have to have a call meeting, you can just do it as part of your work session. You are allowed to vote at your work session.
We are.
My suggestion is, if you're gonna vote on something, just make it a voting item in advance if you want the public to know you're gonna vote on it.
I'll do that.
I think the other issue is, how much time do we need to have devoted to this? And if we combined it to, with a normal work session, someone's gonna get cut short on it, unless this is just real easy for everyone.
How much else is on the work session?
I mean, this is our main priority right now anyway, so that probably has been the majority of the work session.
I'd say we ought to devote our work session to that.
I would, I would agree. Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be a, should, should involve a lot of discussion from all of us to really wrestle with this, there's some pretty big issues.
Yeah, that's what I suggest. I think it's just crucial that we all sit down together and discuss it. A good balance.
Would we be able to have an executive session at a work session?
To discuss personnel issues.
Yes, you won't make it, so, he might want to make a motion, we do it the seventeenth.
Make a motion, we do it the seventeenth, and then it'll be a, what, a call meeting?
It's just your work session.
It's a work session?
Sure. You're just putting it on your work session agenda.
Okay.
And you can note on the agenda that y'all might vote on it if you want to make that anything.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, I'll believe you on the seventeenth. All in favor, let me know, I'm gonna raise your right hand. It's unanimous with seventeenth.
Yes? In our chart at the back of her suggestions is under, I don't know, I guess it is, is this graphic, which is the same graphic that she has on her poster board there. And, you know, I think it's a really good graphic that should tell the public and the council two really big issues. One is that we, I'm going to take advantage, if I can, to point at the graph.
Certainly.
The significance of this is that, so you can see this, I'm gonna aim it over and over. So, these are years, 2013, 14, 15, da-da-da-da. Here was our budget back in 2013. You can see it took a downward slide, and then, starting in 2014, it ramped up, and then it ramped up another year to the point to where it's exceeding the revenue base. And to copy what Miranda says, we have a limited resource, and that's our tax dollars coming in. It's like a business, that's as much as we can spend, you can't go over that. And what this, these two lines represent is, if where the budget is right now today, if we were to continue on that path, and I think we included a one point, one and a one point two something inflation on it, so it tilts up a little bit for inflation, we're exceeding our revenue base all this time. The red line always wants to be below, so we really would like a gap that looks like this going forward. And that's not the track we're on. Over the last two years, we really changed our trajectory to where we spent more than, once we got to here, than what we had. What's the real significance of that? One is, we don't have enough money to pay our employees at the end of the year, the numbers that you recited, we're over budget. That's, that can't happen. So, we need to make an amendment to our budget, which is what we're gonna try to do. The second issue is, if we kept on this track, this is our reserve fund, fund balance, if we keep going, using this, just where we're at now, just keep going, this is seven years, this city is done. That's, that's how long it will take us to dissolve the city. So, the issue is, we need to pay attention here, we need to make some probably fairly significant changes, and ideally, we'd like to be able to get ourselves back to where we were at the end of 2013. I don't know that we can do that, but that, that should be the goal, I guess, and we'd do as good as we can do to do that. But this, this is, this green line should scare the doo out of us, you know, this is not a good story. And so, it's our role as a council to try to, and we'll see how good they are at the work session, to see if they can make the red line go underneath the blue line.
And these numbers are actually, the expenditures for this year are not where we're actually gonna end up at. We're gonna be way higher than that.
Yes. Did we ever get approval to pay for the, the road projects that we did out of SPOSS instead of out of general?
No, those projects were paid out of SPOSS, and right now, we're setting to have to pay those back out of general fund to SPOSS. So, until we figure out.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't Tracy tell you that, why couldn't we pay for our road improvements out of the SPOSS fund?
I have still not been able to contact her in regards to that, but that's what she had put in her audit findings was, this was the result.
Okay, we get the work session set up, for the seventeenth. Next on the item on the list is approve or deny the purchase of cell phone and mobile internet for patrol cars.
Okay. And the police station, since we moved them back down here, currently, the phone bill for up at the police station was a hundred and seventy dollars a month, just for the landline, the fax machine, and the internet. If we, we have two options, either we can do the cell phones, or we can do the cell phones and the hotspot. The hotspot they need in order to run the tag reader when they're out and about, because it has to run, you have to send it through on Wi-Fi, on internet, so. Total together would be ninety-eight dollars, which is still gonna be saving us money from what we've been paying on our landline. However, the hotspot alone is thirty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents a month, and the cell phones alone are sixty dollars a month, so.
Total for both of them?
The total for, yeah, the total for all of it is ninety-eight dollars, so. But they requested to have the hotspot in order to use the tag reader.
That's on maybe internet and everything?
Uh, yes, on the hotspot it is, on the telephones, it is a hundred minutes, I think, a month per phone. And it's through Verizon.
What's our usage per month been? Of course, the chief had, the former chief had his own cell phone.
Right, and that's happening now.
And would use the hotspot, and, and, you know, that's how we initially set up the tag reader, was.
Right, and that's.
Go through his.
That's what we're doing with the police chief right now, he's having to use his own personal phone in order to use the, the tag reader.
So, we, you're asking for a motion to approve or deny the purchase of cell phones and mobile internet for patrol cars?
Right, either, either the hotspot, approve the hotspot, or either approve the cell phones, or either approve the total package.
Yes, Mike?
Just gonna make a motion so we can have discussion, okay? Make a motion to, I guess, approve the request for phones and internet.
Any discussion?
Question?
Give me a second.
Have a second. Have a second.
Yes?
So, Miranda, where is the money, what, what would be the source of funds to do this?
This would come out of their communication fund.
Do they have it in their funds right now?
Yes. It's actually gonna save money in that department if they switch over to this. Either way, if, that is, if we disconnect the phone at the police department, which needs to be done.
So, so, what, what's your recommendation relative to these two options, which, which would you suggest?
I say they at least need the hotspot if they want to use, if you guys want them to use the tag reader. Cell phones, I'm not sure. Cell phones, I'm not sure if that's really needed. He has his own personal phone, but, I mean, it would probably be more effective if he had his own, or had a cellphone, a city cellphone.
I agree with that. Any further discussion? Yes, go ahead.
I mean, we're, even if we do the cell phones as well, we're saving 71 people for a month according to Miranda's document here. And that way, if they have to use it, I mean, they're not, they're using that for police business, and they have to have phone calls or whatever. They're not having complete strangers, having to give their personal phone number out to complete strangers. And then, I don't know if that would cause a, pardon the expression, Hillary Clinton-type situation. If something were to go to court, but, I mean, that's just something to think about. Like, it gives them that, the business line or whatever that's at work.
So what would you recommend this?
Miranda. Oh, I recommend the phones and the hotspot. I think that it would-
Both, yeah.
I mean, Mark doesn't have any friends, so he won't use it for personal.
Well, our policemen should have used their own personal cell phones anyway.
Oh, no, Steve and I agree with that. I do, because you can't, I mean, even with, with working stuff, I mean, you have to deal with business situations, and then it's just, I agree. That's what my point was there.
Yes, Mark.
So I'll amend my motion to, which was pretty big.
You said both.
I did say both. Oh, well, then, I won't want to amend my motion.
I took it as both. You said approve the package.
I approved the package.
I'm going to ask a question off to you. Do you think just 100 hours for each phone, you think that's enough?
100 minutes.
Yeah, I would think that would be fun to conduct business on. I think that's fun.
I mean, because it's free nights and weekends, right? You said?
100 minutes, really not that much.
Oh, no, it says right here, 400 shared minutes. So it's 400 shared minutes, mobile to mobile is free. So if they were calling one another, it wouldn't cost anything. And then it's free nights and weekends as well.
I'd say 400.
Yeah, 400. Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay, do we have?
I have a motion.
Do we have a second?
I have a motion, second. All the papers, we have a discussion. All the papers ready right here. It's unanimous. Okay, next we have discussion, the code violations and enforcement. And this is Mr. Jarrick. I don't know here, I don't know who you're for, and I didn't hold doing the effect.
I'm going to try. We have several things that we've let go as far as code enforcement. And I think it's, it's probably a question of how we reach some of our code enforcements. Like the fence apparently, the lady beside me, she's over on the right away. We give her the variance, and she's on the right away, and there's nobody one up there to, to tell her she don't have to move off the right away. That's one thing. We also got a church out here that's, that's not got no permits for their signs, or we haven't got the rezonance to be a church or anything else. We also made that done. There's several things like that that need to be done. So what, at this point, who enforces our codes? Does Russbridge have to write something up to get him in court to do this, or what?
Police Department?
Police Department.
Enforces code violation.
Right.
Who needs to tell the police and everything? What, what he needs to do and everything? It needs to be that.
Any of you can suggest it, or I guess you can direct certain items to the council if you, if something wasn't being done with.
So if he's, if he's told that somebody's breaking code or ordinance or something, he, he has to take that. I'm sorry, can't hardly talk to him. Well, I've probably been praying for this, but it makes it hard to talk. So that's, that's what we need to do on it. Stop stopping totally closing down. Who does what?
So what he's saying is, okay, how do we do that? So should we put aside an area in the meeting, the regular meeting, or the work session where we discuss, we kind of bring them together and discuss them all at once? Or is that something that has to be discussed in an executive session? Because, I mean, one person can't just randomly say, hey, Mark.
If there's an item, I mean, I would communicate individual concerns to the chief about something that may need to be, have action taken on it. If there's something that needs to come to the attention of the council in terms of a particular item, I don't think I'd make it a regular occurrence to discuss people's rundown properties, et cetera.
Yeah. Or we can just give it all to you, Miranda.
Why not?
Get something to do with it.
Can those warranters report it to?
Sure, usually code violations are, usually code violations are reported to the city by sometimes just citizens, you know. I mean, some cities have websites that you can go and anonymously report code violations. But usually, the complaints come in to City Hall and are given to the police department to take a look at.
Well, how do we want to proceed? I'm not going to, the building in question down here below, below town here, that was an abandoned building, other than it was full of junk and couldn't see the road or anything else for the sake of it. So I don't know, I don't know what he, how he went about getting an inspection to clean that mess up because it was full of junk cars and junk parks. I know he didn't, but I mean.
John and I went and talked, went and talked to him. And so he, I don't think there would be any, probably any permit needed to approve a cleanup around there. Question was, was mentioned to me by John or something similar late. Was the fact that he was working on a field without permit. Then Miranda talked to the inspector, and he said to do it unless it had something to do with flooring or plumbing or a plumbing at him, he didn't have to get a permit.
He was doing maintenance.
So, yeah, just doing maintenance on the building or something. But if you go back, I don't know how we would know it, but if you go back, starts doing plumbing, then it's permit. And so that's what.
So did y'all tell him he didn't leave?
Well, I guess Miranda did because he called, he was on jury duty. He was going to come up and get a permit, but he was on jury duty, and he called. And so I talked to him, and Miranda checked with the inspector and said, what? So it was checked on him, and I just wanted, y'all to know that and everything. So as far as I know, he didn't have. And now, there's going to be a lot of the stuff that we think we might have thought they need permits for, but a lot of things that they won't need permits for. So, you know, like roofing on a house, I think that's what he told him, you know. If we're just putting roofing on a house, they don't need permits for it, so.
Casey, we want a-
Yes, Mike, I'm sorry.
I think a lot of those questions will get resolved too when we enter into our contract with Heritage Homes. And you're right, absolutely right. Some things you don't need a permit for, and something you do.
Well, he's already done with some of it, everything. Here's to Miranda some of it.
That's why we need a staff person to help guide us through some of that.
Somebody to shoot and call.
Right, exactly.
What's left, I suppose, that's been answered. I was, the permit, Miranda, and then later.
Better continue, Oliver. Okay, next you have to approve or deny the switch to newspaper subscription.
We just renewed our Pickens, but we get our annual subscriptions for Pickens and Cherokee. And Cherokee's is about to renew. And we are paying $89 for the annual subscription for the hard copy. If we switch over to the internet base, it's only $40, or it's $40 cheaper, so.
My, my understanding is if they, what we've been clicking.
Let's do a motion first.
Do a motion?
I make a motion to switch internet versions on our newspaper subscriptions.
Okay, I'll stay with you.
Okay.
Welcome for discussion. I think we need a hard copy of the paper where we can cut out the-
Well, that's what I was thinking, that's what I was thinking, saying. My understanding is where now they have to search through to find out something about Nelson. If it's on the internet, then all they have to do is type in Nelson, and it'll bring up anything that's been said about Nelson in the paper. So that way, we just run a copy of it off, so we're still have it.
And a photocopy is going to hold better than, like, the newspaper, which decays after a while anyway. So, I mean, that's the possibility.
Yeah, Brandy had mentioned that, too. She's going to check them all, whatever. That sounded good to everybody else.
I mean, I think the point was is that Miranda and Brandy were looking for, you know, sometimes you can save big in the little things because the little things add up and they add up quickly. So here we have a $40 savings right here where we're still getting the same thing, you know. So it just, it makes, that's why they brought it up.
Okay. Yes, Mark?
Don, ready to raise my right hand as soon as you.
All the papers switching over to the internet on the newspapers, raising right here. It's unanimous.
Mayor. Yes. This is out of order, but I wonder for our guests if they didn't come in in time to hear the city manager's report on number two regarding the reopening of Church Street. I wonder if maybe we should bring them up to date.
Church Street will be reopened, and the state bumps will be down on March the 9th. We've got the materials in-house already to do that on March the 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, we appreciate your interest. Okay, next we have council comments. Yes.
I just wanted to take a moment to give Miranda kudos for all of her hard work. She has come in here with no city experience, and she is kicking about making names and doing fabulous and taking initiative. And she's 10 steps ahead of anywhere where any of us are. And I just, she deserves credit. She's doing a phenomenal job. And you're appreciated.
Yeah, I'll say. Okay. Next we have attorney comments. You have any?
I received the signature that I needed today from the Pickens County District Attorney's Office that the GBI wanted before commencing any investigations. So that came in this afternoon. I will forward it along to the GBI. That's what they said they wanted, so, out of hand.
All right. Next we have public comments. We're opening up for public comments. Would anyone like to make a public comment?
I'm nothing. You just continue, 10 or 14, all left drive. Miranda, I also say kudos to you. And that's very important, the chart, because what you see is not the same as what you hear. And that's very on point. You're going downhill. And another thing, could somebody please spray the door with CRC so it won't squeak so much? And kudos on your, on your, on your, oh, that was very good. I'm sorry.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay. We don't have any other public comments. We need to have an executive session. Okay, and that executive session's not required, so.
I'll make a motion to have an executive session, discuss employees.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to, all the papers, adjourn into the executive session right here. So that'll be four, third, with your, your, what you're saying. Yeah. Four to one. Okay. All right, we're going to adjourn the executive session. We adjourn after the second.